Okay, it's ten AM according to the clock, so we will go ahead and open the meeting. This is our March twelfth, two thousand twenty-four meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission of the City of Dennison. It is our tradition that we begin our meetings with an invocation and with a pledge of allegiance. If you would care to join us, we'd ask that you would please stand with us at this time. Would you bow with me? Father, we thank you for another chance to come together, Lord, to conduct the business of our home. We ask your guidance and your blessings be upon this meeting and each one that's here. We're thankful for all the blessings that you have bestowed upon us, and we give you the thanks. In Christ's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you see. A little housekeeping before we get into our meeting this morning. The planning commission is a recommending body. By that I mean that on cases other than the site plans and plats, which our decision is final on, will be passed on to city council for final approval, and the next meeting will be...
March eighteenth.
March eighteenth, thank you, Ms. York. So if you're here today on a zoning case, that will be passed on to city council for final approval. We've got a full house this morning compared to what we normally have, and we thank you for being with us. We're going to give, each one of you, on our public hearings, we'll give you the opportunity to speak either for or against this particular case. When you come to the lectern, I would ask that you would give us your name and address for the record, and we are going to impose a three-minute limit on all speakers. If someone has already basically said what you were going to say, it's quite all right for you to come, give us your name and address, and just tell us that, you know, that your feelings have already been expressed and that there need no need for you to go through it a second time unless you just absolutely want to. So that being said, we're going to move forward with item three, which is our consent agenda. Any errors, omissions, discussion? All right, seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
With a second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. We're going to go to item four A. Ms. York?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item four A, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on a replat of lots one through five, block one of the B rights, second addition being all of block forty-eight, Decker's replat of Chelsea Park, case number two thousand twenty-four dash zero zero six RP. And this is the aerial of the subject property. To the south, that is what was known as Culpeper Fields. I don't know if you're familiar with that. It fronts, or these lots will front on South French, and they are zoned SF seven point five, a single-family residential. This is the proposed plat. All the lots meet the minimum size, lot width, and depth requirement. And like I said, they will all front on French Avenue. Water and sewer do have to be extended to the property. And while I, in the staff report, staff is recommending approval, given that the property meets all the development standard requirements for the zoning district, I do ask that we change the motion, and this is kind of a long motion, so I just want to make sure that I read it correctly. Given that water and sewer has to be extended, we just want to make sure that there's a note on the plat stating that, and there's not one currently. So staff does recommend approval, subject to a plat note being added to the plat stating that completion of the required public infrastructure as required by the city's subdivision ordinance shall be deferred until the subsequent development of the property and prior to any building permit being released. I'll work with, if the commission feels that's appropriate, I'll work with the surveyor to get that added, and once it's added, we can move forward with filing. And I'm present for any questions you may have, and I believe the applicant is here as well, so.
Since it's, since the note's going to be on the plat, is it necessary that that be in the motion?
Given that it's not on there now, it was recommended that it be in the motion.
Okay, okay. All right, y'all get that? All right, any questions of staff? All right. Anyone here to speak on behalf of this request? Anyone here to speak against? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion.
The staff's recommendation.
Mr. Chair, I'm prepared to make that motion if I can have language.
Karen, is it appropriate for her to just recommend following staff's recommendation? Okay.
I move to follow staff recommendations on this agenda item two thousand twenty-four dash zero zero six RP.
I second.
I'll second. Have a motion with a second? Did, Robert, did you get the second? Did you get Robert a second? Okay. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Item four B?
Item four B, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and make a recommendation on a request to rezone a plus or minus thirty-two point six one acre tract of land, commonly known as twenty-seven hundred Texoma Drive. G-CAD property ID numbers one oh nine eight two six and one one two two seven one from the light industrial LI district to the heavy industrial HI district to allow for a concrete products manufacturer, case number two thousand twenty-four dash zero zero eight Z. Ms. Tate?
Thank you, Ms. York. This morning, we are presenting a case to you for the rezoning in which the applicant has requested a rezone from the light industrial district to a heavy industrial district just south of Texoma Drive and to the east of Highway seventy-five. This is also just north of the rail yard. The intent of the applicant is to have a concrete products manufacturer in which recycled concrete materials will be manufactured into new products. The use of recycle, concrete recycling center does not fit into the light industrial, and the only area in which that does is a heavy industrial district. We currently have to, we have to accommodate all uses per state law, and so that is our recommendation on the heavy industrial and how we are going to move forward with this. The operation includes recycling concrete construction materials to create new products. They will be utilized for the developer to use in his future product, projects, as well as open to the public for purchase. They can also order and make orders for purchase at that location. The recycling center hours of operation are proposed as follows. The operation shall not occur prior to, or will start one hour prior to sunrise and not after one hour of sunset, and manufacturing is anticipated to start at six AM and go until eight PM. However, it should be noted that depending on what kind of orders come in, these hours may need to be adjusted. It should also be noted that hours of operation are not required to be established during a zoning change. Typically, we see that during a conditional use permit in which that condition is stated. The applicant will also have to adhere to all of the requirements by OSHA, the EPA, and the TCEQ. So that means illumination, air quality. There are a lot of different layers of approval that we will have to go through, granted the zoning is approved. The applicant has also stated that they are willing to build a six-foot berm on the western and eastern sides of the property to help with that visual, to improve the visual quality of the property location. The berm would also include eastern red cedars that would be planted on forty-foot centers. According to our future land use plan, the subject property is designated to be developed in a mixed commercial manner with a revitalization overlay. That mixed commercial development means that it includes industrial and manufacturing-type uses, and the intent of the revitalization area means that it's designated to be redeveloped into a walkable and mixed-use area. If you are familiar with the area, we have Reese Foods, and many of our industrial locations are in this, along that corridor of that Texoma Drive. We have recently had some redevelopment that has also been developed in a, an industrial manner. It was noted yesterday by an individual that this is a scenic byway. That means, according to our comp plan, that more landscaping has to be included in the development. So, just so you're aware of that, those redevelopment projects that have taken place further down Texoma Drive have been required to have those additional landscape requirements, and this applicant would be required to do so as well. Because of that, staff does recommend approval of this, or recommend approval of this request, and I am present for any questions, of course, and so is the applicant.
Questions of staff?
Yeah, so I guess one of the questions, I know you have this as part of the long-term plan, but is that fully taken into consideration that this is now like a major thoroughfare to now it's going to be connecting the seventy-five hundred new homes out on the lake and the main thoroughfare for that? I mean, I think as Charlie mentioned in the prior hearing, you know Crawford is a nice thoroughfare in from seventy-five from the south, but really out to the north. The other thoroughfare is eighty-four, right?
There's eighty-four, there's ninety-one, there are several ways, so...
But it's only one that connects the new developments of Dennison.
We do take that into consideration. The comp plan is a recommendation. We do our best to make sure that the uses are compatible with what's already there. So those were definitely looked at as something coming that we took into consideration, but we're looking at currently what is there, and the comp plan was done in two thousand eighteen, so we are about to look at that again based upon what has changed between two thousand eighteen and now.
Which is a lot.
Yes, a lot.
And this is the only heavy industrial along there?
That's correct. We don't have heavy industrial or a primarily light industrial area other than this corridor within the city.
And what are other specific heavy industrial uses?
There are quite a bit in our zoning chart. I would be happy, do you have one in particular?
Some contiguous are nearby to this.
There are no other heavy industrial uses. This would be our only area that is zoned heavy industrial.
Oh, I'm sorry, I guess I misunderstood the answer. This will be the only location zoned heavy industrial.
Heavy industrial, that is correct.
I'm sorry if I misunderstood. I thought you said there were other sites in town that had that use.
No.
Is that correct?
No, the use, the zoning district is heavy industrial. The uses can change.
Gotcha. But we have no other currently operational heavy industrial sites?
We do not.
And so implying or asking what an example of that might be and its impact might be at this point is somewhat irrelevant?
Correct. I think the applicant could answer those questions based on traffic and what they anticipate on production. We will have to require a TIA most likely on how many trips are generated, so there are a lot of steps, like I said, to ensure that it's a good location for this use.
I have a couple of questions as well.
Sure.
With regard to, and some of this might be questions for the applicant, so as far as having a concrete plant in this particular area with, which as you said, Mary, there's no additional heavy industrial right now, how is that going to affect the infrastructure as far as the wear and tear on the roads, things like that? And, you know, just, we'll start with that, and then I've got a question.
Okay. So I want to be clear that this is a recycling, a concrete recycling facility, right? I don't want there to be confusion with concrete plant. Those are two different uses, and so we need to be clear on that. The road, this road is used to that heavy traffic and is already experiencing that with Reese Foods, and so that's a text dot highway that has to be maintained to a certain standard, and any development that comes in has to meet those standards. Additionally, water sewer is there, and we've already vetted that out with Public Works.
Okay, great, thank you for that. The next question, and this is one that might be relevant to the applicant, what types of products are you planning to recycle and produce?
If at this time you could open the public hearing?
We'll let until the applicant comes.
Okay.
Oh, I thought he was, I thought the applicant was here, excuse me.
He is, but we'll let him come to the lectern. We don't have his legal gift.
Okay, got it.
I have a question. Where the John Mansfield property is, is that going to be zoned heavy industrial, or is that going to be light industrial as well?
We are still working through all of that, and I don't believe those plans have been made public, all of them, so I would not like to comment on that. It's currently light industrial, but those discussions are ongoing.
Okay, all right. Any other questions of staff? Okay, seeing none, would the applicant like to come forward? Name and address for the record, please.
James Craig, sixty-eight fifty TPC Drive, Suite one zero four, McKinney, Texas, seven five zero seven zero.
Thank you.
Members of the commission, thank you very much for allowing me to speak today. We, I'm open to any questions. If you, if you'd like to start with Ms. Harwell's question regarding what kind of products, these are all recycled materials, so essentially we'll have different sizes of aggregate that's used from everything from flex base that you put down before you lay the concrete or put down the roads, all the way to five by eights that you use kind of like for rip rap and different, different, different aggregate products used during development as well as erosion control, et cetera.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And then just another quick question to kind of piggyback onto that. It says here in the documents, the recycled products will be available for public use and purchase, so are those just going to be kind of stored in kind of bulk bays, things like that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And so products, I gather, that are larger pieces of concrete will be brought to the facility, and then you will break them up into smaller units that could be utilized for other purposes, like the purposes of aggregate.
Yes, ma'am.
And then you would sell those to private entities, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And in the making, in the converting of the products from the bigger chunks to the smaller pieces that are appropriate for the second user, what sort of noise is generated by that?
That's a great question. So there's, there's lots of different TCEQ guidelines that kind of govern that, and one of those being that, you know, by their regulation, we have to be at least two hundred feet off of any property line. However, the ones that, where, where we're anticipating placing on this site, we'd be more somewhere in the range of four hundred to six hundred feet off any site. There's a great example of one off three eighty in Hillcrest in McKinney. You wouldn't even know that it was there. So from a noise attenuation standpoint, we're obligated by TCEQ to follow all of those rules and regulations, but like we shared in our project narrative, we're willing to put additional noise attenuation components such as the berm, such as the cedars, et cetera.
And what about in the conversion of the bigger units to the smaller units? I'm assuming there would also be some air pollutants that would be released in the crushing process. Would you please address that?
Yeah, as far as the air pollutants are concerned, that is almost one hundred percent mitigated by the different, the various items that we have to do to be in accordance with TCEQs such as spraying the ground periodically so that dust doesn't arise, and I'm not, I'm not an actual operator myself, so all of that stuff, though, is very heavily regulated by TCEQ and OSHA, and so we get, we get inspected every year by TCEQ as well. So there's, there's definitely more than, more than one safeguard in order to, to address concerns such as those.
I'm also noting here a sort of open-endedness that you would ask us perhaps to commit to, and that is that once this public purchase opportunity comes along, then you're going to have to, or have the opportunity, or ask us for the opportunity to extend your potential hours beyond what would consider to be an appropriate use. Would you address that, please?
Yes, ma'am. So typically, these types of facilities operate from about six AM to eight PM. That, that's really just a range. The only time, and we can even limit it if necessary, but the only time that those hours would fluctuate is if we had some sort of special order, because at, at the end of the day, we're at the, we're at the mercy of our clients. So if there's a special job where they need to get it there right at six AM or whatever the case may be, and it's a further distance than usual, we might have to start operations an hour earlier or end an hour later, but that's not the norm, certainly.
And you would not be willing to make to a commitment of an enclosed hour time? You would like us to give you the opportunity to do it at earlier or later times at your discretion and as needed?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Question. Concrete plants or anything related, the two major concerns that we typically hear are dust, which you've kindly addressed, and then traffic, I think, was mentioned earlier. Could you kindly tell us what you foresee? I mean, are we talking about heavy trucks that are going to be constantly going in and out, or, because traffic is a legitimate...
No, I understand the concern. I mean, it's been, we've worked on a couple of these, and it's, it's usually a concern, so well-founded. By and large, we've seen that the, based on the existing infrastructure in place, there's no more, there's no more wear and tear than what you would normally have on, in a light industrial or industrial-type area, so that, that's not a concern on our part.
Another question. I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry.
Linda, thank Angela for the question.
I just had a couple of quick questions.
I'm sorry.
No, no, that's fine, thanks, Linda. Just a couple of quick questions.
Yes, ma'am.
What is the approximate square footage of the improvements that are intended to go onto this property?
The pad sites itself are no more than an acre to two acres.
Okay, thank you. And then also approximately, how many jobs are you anticipating bringing to the area through this recycling plant?
It's a great question. We're still looking through that. We're doing a few different studies, both the economic impact to the city as well as the jobs created.
Do you have an anticipated just range, just kind of a general range?
I would say anywhere from a hundred to three hundred minimums.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Linda.
I'm so sorry for interrupting.
You're fine, you're fine.
You mentioned that there was a facility that was comparable on three eighty in McKinney. Is this also CD six operated?
No, ma'am.
So are C, are you representative of CD six?
Yes, ma'am.
Question then still about the three eighty in McKinney. How close is that three eighty facility to residential neighborhoods?
It is, off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you exactly, but it's about, I would say, a quarter mile or less. And, and those residents, I've never heard of any sort of issue whatsoever, just based on the amount of, the amount of foliage and other noise attenuation devices that we, or in just natural screening as well. It hasn't, it hasn't appeared to be a problem, and actually, the one on three eighty in Hillcrest is technically City of Frisco, and then there's another one out by the McKinney Airport that's City of McKinney. Just wanted to clarify that.
What about other CD, CD six facilities that might be comparable to this one that's requested of us?
Actually, this is our first. This is a, a family investment. We believe in the future of the City of Dennison and believe that this is kind of the forefront of how we can continue to be development-friendly, yet still be energy-efficient and conscious of, of nature as a whole. And so one thing that I liked about the City of Frisco one, just as an example, is they have a recycled zone, zoning district, and so that met all of the criterias to be within their zoning district, and we've been encouraging more and more cities to look at creating those types of districts, just as everyone tries to get more carbon-neutral and energy-efficient.
So with, with that, it kind of brings up one more question. I mean, I, I don't think fundamentally, I simply applaud you for wanting to do the recycling and that, but it's about where, where it's being put. Have you looked at other sites or thought, you know, considered the site where you're putting this? Do you feel it's appropriately placed?
Yes, sir. Everything in that area i- is light industrial, industrial in one form or fashion, so taking that into consideration with what's there existing as well as what the future comp plan shows, we thought it was a perfect fit.
But this isn't light industrial, this will be heavy industrial.
That, that's correct.
Any other questions of speaker?
I did have one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
As far as the waste management, as far as production waste management, things like that, you said this is the first facility of this type that your company has...
This specific group, yes, ma'am, but whoever we end up operating it with, that's what they do all day, every day. And so there's a couple that are very interested in partnering with us on it, but at this point, we haven't made a decision. Whoever we do choose, I assure you, they'll be top of class.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I'll give you an opportunity to come back at the end for rebuttal, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else here who wants to speak on this case, either for or against? Yes, sir, please come forward. Need your name and address for the record, and by the way, if you haven't filled out a speaker's card? Okay, well, you could do that. I just, before you leave today, please fill one out and make sure the ladies over here get a copy.
Mr. Chairman, this is a public hearing. They do not have to fill out a card.
Oh, they don't have to?
No, so...
Okay, all right.
My name is Dean Reddell. I'm at twenty-nine oh two Texoma Drive, and I really oppose this because it's, for several reasons, Dennison is doing such a good job, and they've got such major awesome plans for the northwest corner of eighty-four. And by putting a plant like this in, we just, who's going to want to go there, you know? I mean, it's, it is dusty. It is, you have a bunch of trucks coming through there. A lot of people, since the truck stop is on ninety, on the, right there by the high school, a lot of people take eighty-four to get to the high school, and then when you're going to start putting a bunch of trucks, semis that are trying to get as many loads as they can into that facility, because it's, however many loads they could do a day, they're the only one they make. So they're gonna, they're gonna be running pretty fast in there. And I just think the noise, I mean, if you're around there, rail yards, when the train connects, even though there's the big old berm that comes up from, from the yard, you can still hear, hear the trains connect. And by crushing concrete, you're going to hear that, and that they, and this is going to be a, a plant that's all the time. I mean, it's just going to be constant noise, and then, you know, talking about OSHA, OSHA, a group, OSHA stated that there, there's silica in that, in that concrete, and all that's going to be exposed. And I was told that there was a, a plant in Sherman on Highway seventy-five, it's a, it's a temporary plant, but I drove by there yesterday, and you could see a cloud over it, and there's nothing, it's, it's in an area where there's nothing there. They want to put this, where Dennison wants to put all this development on eighty-four. It's just, it's, it's like, it's gonna, nobody's going to want to come here. But what about out by the John Mansfield plant, somewhere like that? But what about, out by the John Mansfield plant, somewhere like that? But right here where Reese Foods is, the car dealership, I don't know what that does, but I, I would think that that would just edge the paint on new vehicles. I don't know, it's not my profession, I don't know about that. I'm not educated on that, but I just, I'm really opposed to this. I think it would be noisy. I have an office right by there, you know, we're dispatching out of there. I just don't think it's a good idea for Dennison.
All right, any questions of speaker?
Very dangerous, too, I think, for the road.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hang on one second. Go ahead, ma'am.
Go ahead.
You're good, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Betty Price. I work at two-nine-three-one Texoma Drive in Dennison, just across the street from the proposed location. And I stand before you to voice my strong opposition to this rezoning request. The VOCs alone admitted from any concrete manufacturing would be detrimental to businesses, employees, and patrons of this area, not to mention the wildlife. Settled dust on all surfaces would be enough of a nuisance, but breathing in that dust creates its own set of problems for humans, animals, and machinery. The road already has high con- commercial traffic, but adding heavy equipment traffic around the clock, potentially, so close to the mouth of a major highway on a hill with limited visibility would increase the risk for vehicle accidents unnecessarily. To address some of the concerns that you all have already asked, I can speak from personal experience, having worked there for the, since two thousand sixteen about traffic. It is heav- heavily industrial traffic, and it is a danger for me every single day turning to work, trying to make sure, do, am I safe to turn, or do I need to continue going because the truck behind me didn't see my blinker and didn't see me slow down? Because it's on a hill, right as you come off of seventy-five. Talking about maintaining the roads, a couple of years ago, the road was repaved. The very same day, trucks came through and tore the road up. It took two years to get the road fixed because the traffic is so high on that road. So telling me the maintenance of a road is hard now. Adding constant traffic for cement recycling would make that also a concern. You're talking about abatement and prevention of pollution. The only place that they're required to maintain those standards is on their property. It takes no consideration for the properties around it that are also affected by the pollutants such as dust. And then also, I just encourage you to look up if you're, if this is something you're still on the fence about when you're making your recommendation, look up Houston Aldean. They have several of these manufacturing plants, and you can see all of the concerns that the citizens that live, work, and recreate around those areas have as well. Thank you.
Any questions of the speaker? Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Jim Mira, two-one-one-six North Haskell, Dallas, seven-five-two oh four. I'm here today to oppose the proposed rezoning. I'm a partner in Texoma Gateway Limited. We own a hundred fifty-three acres directly across eighty-four at the future intersection of the tollway, seventy-five and eighty-four. And we believe, and we put, started investing at the intersection in the early two thousands. We continue to buy a total of fourteen pieces to acquire our land. And today, we think that the intersection of seventy-five and the tollway will become one of the premier intersections in Grayson County in North Texas. We are in discussions with a data center company to acquire a portion of our property. And so I have ten billion reasons why I oppose this zoning. A typical data center today, two hundred thousand square feet, is almost one point five billion dollars in investment. The potential for ten billion dollars in data centers on our property is real. We also have thirty acres of multifamily, which is directly across the street from the proposed use. This is not conducive, their use is not conducive to residents and to multifamily property. We'd be directly north, the wind blows in Texas eighty-five percent of the time from the south, so we'd be right in the line of fire. So we oppose this. We think the use can be better served in other places. We think that destroying an intersection like seventy-five and the tollway in a short-term fix or short-term use that gets long-term zoning, that would be there forever, would have a very detrimental effect on our values today and in the future. Therefore, we're, we're in opposition to the proposed rezoning.
Okay, any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak?
Yes, my name is David Craig, sixty-eight fifty TPC Drive, Suite one oh four, McKinney, Texas, seven-five oh seven oh. You, you heard my son speak earlier. It's been our experience, this, this sounded like a good idea, and, and we have a great partner, by the way, that does this for a living, and have worked on several other sites with him. I think, moving forward for the City of Dennison, this will be a need. But after hearing what we're, what we've heard, and Mr. Mira, and the Schuler family that we're very close to, and we're unaware of their holdings across the street, but also listening to those location, traffic, et cetera, we're gonna, we're gonna pull our application. We think that that has merit. We don't want to put you in a compromising position. I think you would have voted the right way anyway, as would counsel, so we're gonna, we're gonna remove our application. We'll look for another site. We think, as I said, we believe in the growth of Dennison, and we will continue to look for an appropriate site. So this has been very informative for us. I'm sorry if we wasted staff's time and your time, but we, we appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
We appreciate your respect of the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Craig, let me just say that it's not that, I mean, I, I, it's not that we totally against the use. My stance on this is, this is more of a land use issue where it's a spot zoning case, that I have issues with that mainly. As far as wear and tear on the highway, I, I can guarantee you Reese Foods got a lot of eighteen-wheel trucks going in and out of there every single day. So there's going to be wear and tear on it, and it's a light industrial district, so that's, that's, that's a given. We can't change that regardless. As far as air quality is concerned, and, and I have my opinions about that. However, we have the EPA and other organizations who have studied it and, and have regulations that if you meet those regulations, then it certainly supersedes my opinion. So, but thank you for your consideration. We appreciate that, and please work with staff, and we'll see if maybe we don't have another area of town that will eventually be zoned as a, as a heavy industrial district. I do agree that we do need a heavy industrial district in this city, especially as we grow up. You made a good point with, with that. So, but that being said, thank you for your, your consideration. We appreciate it. All right, that being said, I don't think there's any need to continue the public hearing, so I'll close it, and, and we don't need to take any action at this point, correct?
That's correct. The case will still be on City Council's agenda, and I will fill them in on what just took place.
Okay. All right, that being said, do we have any staff updates today?
I believe that we have any. Do you? Nope.
Okay, seeing no other business, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Just a second. Have a motion with a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned at ten-thirty-nine a.m. Thank y'all for coming.